This meeting's to order. We've got a 6:35 start time. Roll call shows that we have three in attendance. Anton said that he is minutes away, so he will be here, so that can be taken as it may. The next thing we're gonna do, first thing we do at the meetings, is we will open the open forum, so if anyone has any discussion they'd like to bring up to the council, we ask you to come up to the microphone and identify yourself, and then you have, what does it say? Five minutes. Five minutes of time. Does anyone have any, anything for the open forum? Alright, hearing nothing, we'll close the open forum, move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda has the typical three things on it: approval of the agenda itself, the approval of the meeting minutes from the previous meeting, and then the approval of the payment of bills as included in the packet. Yep, there we go. Unless there's something we'd like to pull for consideration, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. There's only three of us, so...
I wasn't there to approve the minutes, so I let Tracy decide that...
Oh, that's right, you weren't there. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I miss Dave Mills right now.
Right, because... Don't worry, we'll be able to fill it in. Well, you're not going to.
He's not dead to me, but I'm not saying I miss him.
Anyway...
Oh boy.
There he is. High five.
Just trying to open up that popcorn.
Because then he doesn't have to be a part of the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, propose. There he is. We just got through the consent agenda. Thanks for coming. Alright, so do we want to move forward as the agenda is presented?
Yeah.
Alright, so liquor store update. Come on up, Chris. So, you guys may notice, in your packet, there is a bunch of information from the liquor store. Chris put together a bunch of reports for us, which are pretty good information. And we'll let him tell us what it means.
Give me two seconds, Chris.
You did your popcorn.
It has to be noisy. I can't do this.
You didn't bring any beer or anything, did you?
Yeah.
You should go get some.
Popcorn and beer?
It's been a while. In this room?
What? In this room?
Yeah.
Used to be here a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Some of us might even remember that.
Yeah.
Okay, we're good. That's how we take ourselves real soon.
Oh, Tim's gonna be good.
This is ridiculous. Okay, continue.
I don't have the stuff in front of me, so...
Oh, there should be an extra.
I just took it.
She took it.
If you wanted to just ask questions, I can pretty much answer them, like...
It looks like you've had some great years.
Steady growth.
Yeah.
Steady growth.
So let's talk about the graph that you got there, daily total sales, or daily sales totals. So it looks like, I mean, obviously, as we would expect, your big days are Friday and Saturday. And pretty much all the other days kind of follow that median line there. And it looks like Sundays are lagging behind it. What's, do you know what the axis, like the Y-axis of?
Yep, so we didn't include the totals, because I don't know why.
Okay.
But, maybe the important thing to note about Sundays is that we're only open five hours.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So that's one of the reasons. And then, the other thing to note is, we're making money. So, even on those low totals, it's covering our operating plus.
Yeah, I think it's kind of hard to tell what Sunday sales have done because of, you know, the steady growth, what, how much have they impacted that, how much have they not impacted that.
People haven't built up a culture yet of shopping on Sundays.
Right.
So, a lot of people are just not buying on Sunday, just because it's, that's...
Right, I do know that there's a fair amount of places that have decided to not be open on Sundays during quiet times of year. But I think we do well enough that it warrants being open continuously on Sundays.
That was my big concern, was that we wouldn't see numbers that would justify that kind of, you know, keeping the building open.
You know, during the slow time we were staffing one person for Sundays, so we don't have a lot of overhead.
Okay.
When you'd come to talk to us early about the Sunday sales, you had mentioned at that time that you thought it was a lot of Canadian business. Any idea of how the Canadian business is on Sundays now that it's been in place for a while?
It really ebbs and flows with the holiday weekends. You know, they get that long
Sure.
Family Day weekend once a month, plus whatever other Mondays they get off. But, I think they make probably half of it. It's pretty safe to say.
Well, you know, around here, if you closed every hour that you didn't make money, there'd be a lot of closed doors.
Yeah.
So you can't really think of it that narrow when you make those kind of business decisions, because, yeah.
I definitely think it's the right one, and I think it's the right one to be open year-round, too.
Good.
If we're averaging $1,800 on Sundays and we're spending, you know, not even $100 on labor?
Yeah, and the lights are on, so there's another 10 bucks.
Right.
The ridges were on anyway.
Right.
Right. Yeah, and I mean, that's the biggest expense, is probably coolers running.
Yeah. So, we're making enough.
Yeah, we're paying for a cooler.
24-hour liquor store.
No!
Well, you know...
I was waiting to see what your reaction would be to that.
Remember, like, as my friend just said, I can walk over to the downtown Target and get my liquor now before I head home on the bus.
Yeah.
If we don't start being competitive and doing what other, you know, the laws are gonna keep changing, and if we want to be a functioning liquor store, we gotta be a destination one, we gotta be one they love, we gotta be special, like so many other businesses in this community. And, we gotta move that forward for you to have continued success. And I think having good hours is just one tiny step in that direction.
Yeah, I agree.
And consistency, too. Like, what Tim was saying is that we've got to build this culture of people understanding that it's available on Sundays, so that they're actually gonna use it. I think that that's a big...
Well, in this report, is about
Come get drunk on a Sunday. Great!
Current usage and sales.
Yes.
It doesn't talk at all about what it could be.
Right.
You know, I mean, you know, if we expand the liquor store, we do something, you know, create more space, what are the options in terms of providing more service and options and...
Yeah, what do you feel like?
Product.
Like, space you have, you know, I mean, it's like areas where you feel like you could grow, I mean, based on...
Oh, there's lots of areas we could grow.
Yeah, kind of all across the board?
Yeah, oh yeah.
I mean, I hear a lot about the wine selection, that, you know, just isn't a big enough variety of wine selection.
Big enough space.
Well, I mean, but a lot of that is. It's depending on space.
Yeah, those are all spatial issues.
Yeah, but, you know, as you said earlier, buying in quantities that, right now, you don't have capacity to even buy quantities in a lot of stuff, just because you have no storage capabilities, so...
And that's even with expanding into some of the jail cells and stuff like that, which I think is absolutely amusing when you go in there and, like, you can open the jail cell door and there's just booze. It's a total flip of what they used to be used for.
Yeah, we used to have to use it first.
And drying people out.
Now, anyway, it's pretty handy. One of the things we wanted to demonstrate, or attempt to demonstrate, and this was before we decided about Sundays, was is there a way to look at Sundays and see if they affect Saturdays and Mondays? And, we can't yet, because we've only got this year. So we only, and even if we had last year, we would only know, it would have grown anyway, right? Because we just keep going up. So it's really hard for us to make that determination. So instead, it's back to, well, is there any reason why we would regret being open on Sundays? And I don't think we have one.
No.
Well, I think especially with the tourism economy, where you have people moving through that might not be here the next day.
Right, all the transient business, that's...
Something if you don't catch it that day, then you're not gonna catch it the next day, because they're not gonna be here, and so...
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me like maybe Mondays are a little slower, just a little bit with Sunday sales, but Saturdays are just as busy. Doesn't really seem to be robbing any days.
Well, maybe in July, when we get, because July will be one year, right?
Yeah.
Because we started opening on Sundays in July.
Yeah.
So maybe in July, we can compare the Monday numbers of 2016, 2017, '18, or 2016, '17, '17, '18.
It's tricky, though, because if you look at this chart, each one of those peaks is actually one day, right? So the second highest day we had was a Monday, and it was the Monday after the Sunday we opened for the first time.
Oh, interesting.
It was our second-best day of the year. And why is that? Because it was July 3rd.
Yeah.
You know, so there's this randomness about it that makes that Monday more important than a regular Monday in 2016 or '17. So it's just gonna be really hard to do a good analysis that says, this is the effect opening on Sunday had.
And I think overall, if sales are going up, then we're really not killing anything. I mean, you can't spend too much time in this concept.
Yeah.
It's working.
It's working.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of other things you want to spend time on. Because it's not just buying stuff. Everybody wants an experience when they come shopping now.
That's true.
And, there's a lot of liquor stores that offer experiences when you go down to the cities now, and you go in and you see all the cool things you can do, from classes to whatever. So, yeah, if you're gonna be a competitive liquor store in the future, you'll have to kind of be thinking more about things like that.
And that needs space.
They gotta get you some space.
Cheapers, you're already talking in the, like, talking out like you're a part of, "Oh, he wrote, she wrote." Not yet.
So, interestingly, the best-selling beer we've got, by product volume, anyway...
The Voyager.
Voyager.
Way to go.
Yeah, pretty interesting.
Ooh, and Castle Danger.
And Castle Danger.
And Castle Danger's right behind it, yeah. So I would have expected, well, it's Bud Light, right?
Yeah.
And maybe it is, like, by volume, actual volume. But in terms of the number of 30-packs versus the number of six-packs, we sell more as six-packs than we do what you would have thought, what I would have thought.
Yeah.
And by the way, Scott said if you want some help, he can help you run a lot more reports and details, if you want it.
Okay.
More help, happy to help you.
Well, he did all, these were all specialty reports that he put together.
He said there's more things he'd be more than happy to help you with.
So if there's things you want to see, council, let Chris know.
Yeah.
And he'll be back in a couple months, and we'll look at some more stuff. The goal here was, we wanted to see him, just some face time with Chris. But it's also, we're trying to grow some awareness here about what's going on there, to prepare ourselves for what we know is coming, the conversation about a new liquor store.
Correct.
So...
The big thing that I was concerned about was the conversation about whether Sundays were actually worth it in the dead of winter. And if you say that they are, and it's shown that they have been, that answers a big question that I had. I think that what we're gonna have to keep, what we're gonna have to keep looking at going forward is, and it's probably a pretty hard thing to quantify, but trying to identify how the, how the space limits us. You know, because when we start creating a concept of a new liquor store, we need to know how big to make it. And that's gonna be something that, I don't know how to quantify, so I want to keep thinking about that.
Well, you know, times that, you know, I'm out of town and I, you know, go to a liquor store in other communities, especially tourist locations, you know, I think of the space and the areas they have set aside for the different, you know, products. You know, I mean, just the beer cooler space is like, you know, way beyond what we even have.
Besides having our space.
And three times.
We have very little dedicated to the craft beers, you know, most, well, you know all that.
Comparatively, yeah.
You know, the wine selection is, you know, very limited, just because of the space limitations there, too. And, you know, you go to other liquor stores, and they have the aisle of Italians and the aisle of French, and, you know, I mean...
Chilean and whatever.
Three French wines and...
Yeah.
Six Italians, and, you know, I mean, not faulting you, I'm just saying that.
No, there's a lot of constraints to...
I'd actually say that the wine selection's noticeably improved in the past...
With all the physical, physical building space constraints, you've done an excellent job.
Yeah. So, do you have any concerns? I mean, like, we're in the middle of winter. Do you have any concerns right now of things that we could, that we could start talking about right now, apart from space and the building and things like that, or have things been working pretty well?
I kind of feel like that's the biggest concern.
Okay.
You know, that's, if we want to grow, we need space. You know, that room bought us some time. But overall, it's, you know, it's just a bulk-buy game. That's the name of it.
Okay. Do you guys have any other questions for him, or any closing comments?
What is the, what is, I mean, is there any sort of timeline? Maybe we know it's relatively short-term?
No, we haven't developed the timeline.
I just wonder about, like, you trying to think of, you know, I mean, in the, like, what's the ideal, right? In thinking of...
What's the ideal as far as the space goes?
And just not, so it's not like, so, here we go. Like, I don't know, just so you can kind of think about those ideas, or like, as you're ordering and as you're, you know, thinking about...
Well, I think like, something like the size of Johnson's Foods would be perfect.
How many square feet do you operate out of now?
Like, 2,000?
I actually have to block a few cells.
Is it 2,000?
It's not much. I remember, remember when we had those guys from...
We stepped it up, yeah.
We had a group of guys come from the Minnesota Municipal Beverage Association. They came, this was right after I got elected, thank you. And we walked through there with those guys, and like, they walked through and they were just like, "Oh my God, this is your storage?" You know, there was nothing there. And we did step it off and we added up, and I think it was around 2,000 square feet.
Yeah, give or take a little bit.
Including storage, including coolers. Like, that was the retail space. The retail space is probably 1,000 square feet or so. So...
Well, and there's things, too, like, I mean, a bigger storefront, a bigger showroom. You know, you walk into any big liquor store, they've got boxes of Windsor stuff. That's the sale spot. You know, there's 50 cases against the wall, and that's just...
And that's our number-three most profitable product. Windsor 175s.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Plus, you could have, you know, food snacks, you know, other items.
Well, you know, like, a tasting area, like snacks, like, yeah, there's a lot of things that we just can't...
Can't do now.
Yeah.
What other things you could do? Well, there's that website with all those architects who built all those other liquor stores around the state. Go there, and like, you know, go talk to all those different liquor store managers around.
When we did that talking previously, though, a couple years ago, then, I remember, I remember being a part of those conversations, and it seemed like, you know, like, a lot of it was kind of a big circle, where it came back to, well, what do you want? Because, because they didn't, they didn't give us any, like, we asked those guys, we came in and we said, "This is the amount of volume we do. This is, this is how much space we have. We want to, we want to, you know, expand this store." What, you know, how big should we make it?
So you think, I mean...
These guys are circling you. I've talked to them, too, at different events.
Are you talking about the Minnesota Liquor Bar?
Yeah.
The M L B A or whatever it is, yeah.
So, go somewhere else.
But there's gotta be a, I mean, right, it's, we're only, we're only gonna be able to make so much revenue. I mean, there's only gonna be so much revenue.
So what we asked for was two things. One, who would you recommend help us with a space needs study? And they didn't have a good answer.
Correct.
And, two, is there any sort of formula out there that would help us kind of understand what kind of ratio of volume to money, or anything like that? So, just to give us an idea of where does the diminishing return show up for us, and there isn't. So, there isn't gonna be clear answers here. We're just gonna have to make some evaluations, take some risks.
What about some of your vendors?
As far as...
Some of those vendors had some assistance with stuff like that when they looked in their website.
They do.
Suppliers.
Oh, suppliers?
Yeah, they've got some assistance, but it still is, basically, it comes down to kind of a leap of faith.
Sure.
You know, in the long, that's kind of the gist of it, when it's all said and done, you know. Nobody really has these things that say, "Yes, it needs to be this big. Yes, you should build it here." "Yes, you should," you know, there aren't definitive answers to any of those questions.
So you gotta put on your common sense hat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's gonna take a little bit of research on our part to go out and just take a look at what other communities are doing that have taken that jump. They're not gonna give you their financial data, but at least you can go in and kind of see.
It's public.
Some of it's public information.
Those municipal liquor stores.
Municipal liquor stores, but those that aren't.
That's the auditor.
The, yeah, we also have to, we have to weigh those calculations in with opportunities that are present, you know, if there are buildings that come up for sale in town, or if there are locations that would be developable for something like that. You know, those are opportunities that we have to assess as well.
So now you're kind of sketching out how we're gonna attack this question. And the original part was, when, you know, what's the process? Do we have a timeline? And I think now would have been when, if it wasn't for, well, we need to recreate the council first. So, as soon as we're reformed, I think what I was hoping to do about now was sit us back down and do some strategic planning again, kind of review the things that we've accomplished, and start talking about what's next. And it seems like what's next is City Hall, the liquor store. So, let's just, let's confirm that that's true, and then we'll get started on it. But first things first, we need five people on the council.
Correct. So, does anyone have any final conversation or questions for Chris?
Keep up the good work.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chris.
I'd also like to reiterate that I think the liquor store needs to stay downtown, or I should since say, "I think it needs to stay downtown", just because of the amount of foot traffic and the amount of...
Now, the people who come here want a walking experience.
Lodging and...
Yeah.
I mean, in the summer, especially.
You see, you see that because you're downtown, but also, there's the challenge of people finding the liquor store that are driving by that don't necessarily see the liquor store.
That, but that's the challenge with any business when you first come some, to somewhere. You're gonna have a tough time finding it unless it smacks your face.
What people that are currently downtown and walking to the liquor store, drive to the liquor store, I mean, we're the only liquor store in town, so it's not like...
Right, but an impulse buy is a lot easier made. When you, you know, when you've had two bottles of wine at the cricket spoon and you're going back to your room, you're probably not gonna get in your car and drive up the hill again.
That's right.
You know?
Yeah.
I mean, just those logistics, walking distances is very important.
Yeah. I mean, I've heard you say that, and I guess that...
You know, look at the history of the businesses on the hill.
I'd like to really look at the...
And I watch them walk by with their bags a lot, and I answer that question all day long, which is why we moved the sign around to the other side of the building.
I think that's helped a little bit.
I think it has, too. If nothing else, when I point them out the window, they can actually see it. Like, they don't believe you. You can say, "It's just right there. Huh? What?" No, literally, it's right there. So, yeah. But that's what happens in a small town, and nobody figures out that they can't get lost. Like, I'll tell them to go around the corner to your bike shop, and I have to tell them 10 times how to do it, because they're scared they're gonna get, like, "Look, and if you go too far, you're underwater." So just don't worry about it.
Only two blocks long.
Yeah, you're not getting lost here, folks. But that's how it works.
Okay, so that's good closing comments from you. Does anybody else have any, anything? Do you have anything else for us? Nobody?
Would you be open to public restrooms in the liquor store?
Absolutely.
Look at that pause on his face.
Easily accessed and... Although I don't think a liquor store is the first place for a person to just pull in and go to the bathroom, either.
No, no, no.
Customer.
Customer-focused, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Could sell lots of bags of ice that way.
Another can of pop.
Another can, single can of pop.
That's right.
"I feel really guilty I should buy something, because I used your bathroom. I'll take that water over there and some ice."
The shame buy.
Yeah.
The bathroom fee. Well, thanks, everyone.
Yep.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, so moving on to the next item on the agenda, this is the drum roll.
Oh, don't do that yet.
Yeah, don't do that yet.
We're gonna need you for a minute.
We have, we have city council openings.
Oh, we can't do that to the end.
No, we can do it in the middle, but we should probably just fill Dave's vacancy first.
Okay, nevermind.
Dave has a vacancy that is good for the rest of this year, meaning that his term is up this November, or this December 31st. So whomever gets appointed has the opportunity to run for another full term this November. So that's the one we're gonna focus on first. You may have noticed in your packet that we have two letters, one from Kelly Swearingen, and one from Jonathan Stechelberg, who happened to both be here tonight.
I noticed that.
I'm not sure that it makes much difference, though, or if it needs much discussion, but we need to fill Dave's appointment, and we're gonna do that one right now.
Do I have a question?
Yeah.
So, both positions will come up for election in the fall.
November.
Right.
Yes.
But, I'm up. Dave's obviously gone. Tracy will be leaving. So Tracy would have two years left.
Yes.
Right?
Yep. Kennedy will be the only person who is not up for reelection this November.
Wait a minute, how could I...
His grandfather did.
Last man standing.
So here's how it's gonna work.
But, I mean, so then, I guess how it would do, what the question was, is based on how you appoint now, does that make any difference?
It makes this little bit of difference. The Dave's vacancy, as Jay was explaining, goes till the end of the year, because that's the end of his term. Tracy's vacancy, when it exists, because it's this year and two more years, we'll have to hold a special election to fill her term. We'll hold that special election at our regular election in November. So you'll make an appointment to fill her term until the election. And then that person who's elected can qualify and come sit on the council. So if Dave's term is till the end of December, Tracy's appointment will be until a person is qualified from the election, which could be in November.
So then that's, I guess, what my question is, is so on the ballot, is there mine and Dave's spots that would be, or the new person we put in?
Yep.
Would be, but then there's gonna be a special election for Tracy's spot?
That's right.
So then, so if you've got, whatever, six people that want to run for city council, do they have to pick between running for Dave's, or, you know what I mean?
I do know what you mean. I don't know the answer to that question, but I do know that there'll be two separate questions on the ballot.
Okay.
The one is, who do you vote for for city council? You get to pick two. The top two are elected. And the other one is a special election for Tracy's opening, and it'll just be for the next two years.
So, but then do you have...
So can they sign up for both?
Right.
I don't know. I'll ask Brady.
Yeah, good question. I didn't even think about that.
We've got till September or so to figure that out, so...
Yeah, okay, fair enough. Alright, so we have, I handed out to you this City of Grammeray's Resolution 2018-04, which has a lot of blanks on it, and that's because we are going to be appointing someone to fill Dave's position. Now, we have two qualified candidates, who I have spoken with both of them about it, are willing to serve. So I would entertain a motion to appoint one of these folks to this position.
Before we do that, could we, could we just ask if they, we have their letter, if they have anything else they want to say, you know, to the council? Well, I mean, I just, you know, there may be something else that you might want to just add to what you put in the letter and...
Like seating assignments, like, do you want to sit next to me? Like Dave used to, do you want to sit next to me?
Do you have retreats?
Who wants to sit next to me?
I'm coining at the chair.
What's your good side on the camera, see?
I don't know that I have a lot to tell you. I know Jay and I talked yesterday briefly. Tim, I think you know who I am. Anton knows who I am. Mike certainly does. I guess more or less for me, do you have questions of me that you want me to answer to you that you didn't get there? Or do you want me to elaborate on anything that you read? It was kind of real condensed.
Right.
Right, you know, one of the things that I like about, you know, this kind of a process is that we ask for people to step forward that are gonna, have an interest in the future of the community, and, you know, I mean, it's good that we have people that, you know, have lived here for a long time, that, you know, you're young here, you went to school here, you have seen the changes, and you want to be part of the future. And I think that's, you know, what we really like to see in terms of somebody who wants to be on the council, is that, that kind of investment in the future and...
Good. I hope that sometimes it's held against you.
Well...
I think we all know, you know, as much as people say, "Oh, I've moved here and I'm not a local," and that could be a discussion for a whole other day, but sometimes it's held against you that, "Well, you're a small-town person, and you can't open up your mind to see things." And, I think everything that I put in that letter to you shows that I have done steps to broaden my horizons. The leadership class I took over the last two years taught me so much. And when I went into it, I thought, "This is gonna tell me how to deal with people that are, when you come late to work, how do I deal with that kind of person and this and that?" "Oh, no, no, no." I've learned, what tools do I have? What can I use to help me be better to understand other people? And how do I work with somebody different than me? And as I sit here and look at this, it's a team that's making decisions. I'm not gonna agree with all of you, and you certainly aren't gonna agree with me, and that's okay, but we're gonna have to figure out how to get along and move forward. And, being that I was born and raised here, yeah, I have a vested interest. It's home, you know? I just changed jobs. This is probably allowing me, like I told Jay last night, and with the meetings being in the evening, sorry, Mike, it allows me an opportunity to put myself into something that I've always been interested in. I think by the time I was 40, I did more community service-type things than most people forty, I did more community service-type things than most people in all the different places I have served, and eventually found I needed to back out and do my own career thing, finish raising my child, all that. Now, I'm kinda back to a spot where a few doors have opened for me that I can come back into public service. And it very much interests me to move things forward and be a part. I don't like people that sit behind walls, that sit on Facebook and bash, that don't come, that don't find out. Not saying that they can't, but if you wanna be active and you wanna find out things, then you gotta come and be a part of the discussion respectfully. I think this is a small way that I can start that process.
Cool.
That's great.
That's awesome.
Thanks.
It's one of the reasons we moved the meetings to six-thirty, so that people can...
People can come.
Deal with their, you know, feed the kids and...
Yep.
Well, plus, most of us work until after.
Well, that's just it.
Most people work till four.
You know, eight to four-thirty, eight to five, or salary done here till as long as you need me. It'll go home when the time allows, or it doesn't allow you to do these things. Now, I have a little bit more freedom to do that.
Oh, that last part was really impressive. What about the salary?
No, that is, that is salary. That's how it works.
That's how salary works.
So, Jonathan, do you have anything you wanna say? We're gonna make them spin the camera all the way around.
Watch out, Chris. That was great. I could reiterate a lot of that. Also born and raised here. I just heard the, the notice on the radio that there's a position open, and ever since my wife and I moved back here three years ago, serving has been something I've thought about, not necessarily right now, but when it opened, I said, "I think, I think this is the time to do it." The, the job I have now is all remote-based, and so I felt a need to give to this community, 'cause everything I do gets shipped out, and I just wanna be a part of this and work for, work for Grand Marais.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. Is that, does that fulfill your, your...
Yeah, I would then ask if either of you have a preference in terms of the two positions.
I don't know that we know if there's a difference until September anyways.
No, the way I look at it, both Jonathan and I can by the end of the year go, "Woo! Done, go on!" Or say...
Oh, good God, no. You're, you're right, you can.
I put on Facebook, "Well, I'll try to be your next city councillor, wish me well, or send me a sympathy card, L-O-L." So, we have that option, I think, to say, "This is something I wanna be a part of," or, "Hey, this is not what I thought, and it's not for me, and..."
We tried to explain this to everybody else before they served, but you can only do that if you find your own replacement.
That's what, that's what I told Tracy. I told Tracy that she can't, she can't resign until she finds her replacement.
Be careful what you wish for.
Just want five people.
Well, when I, when I was appointed fifteen years ago, I guess I still found my replacement.
Yeah, you keep working on it.
Not very good, that, that kind of thing.
You ever left city council?
Yeah, 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 well, maybe. There'll be a time, there'll be a time.
I know.
I know. All right, so with all that conversation, does anyone have a motion to make about an appointment for, for the position, for Mills's empty position? Now, this is the position that will be up for election this, this fall. Term runs to December thirty-first.
Can I say anything? We have to wait.
You, well, well, we should make a motion. Okay, I make a motion to appoint Kelly Swerengen for this position.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. And now is discussion. Go.
I was gonna say, is this one of those deals where we can legitimately flip a coin?
No, do you remember when we...
Bad memories, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Very right. It all went well, though.
So, yeah, that worked out really well.
Yeah, it did work out really well.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Would you like to have a seat?
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You seriously?
This is what I need to get right up here.
That was Mills' chair, but, you know, you don't have, you don't have to sit there.
So, I have to step in and move up tonight?
She reads.
Look at you!
Come here.
Yeah, because you gotta, we gotta fill...
Yeah, that's what I did. Go for it.
This is the real deal, man.
Where's your satchel?
My satchel?
I didn't even bring my crown.
You have to read that. We're gonna have to read you this again when Rhonda can be here with the camera, too. Probably Brian will wanna picture her.
Rhonda said my name wrong on the radio, and she knows me, so what, is she gonna get...
Yeah.
Shh, where?
Oh, pass her over the popcorn.
Now that's your, now that's your official desert name.
Yeah, that's great.
Well, I don't...
Stable.
Anybody who doesn't say it.
Oh, you gotta read this?
Yep, you gotta read that.
Hand it up.
We all have to read this.
"I, Kelly Swerengen, under penalties of law, do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor for the City of Grand Marais..."
Uh-oh, that's not the line.
Discharge the mayor.
I didn't know what you wished for today.
That was my trick. I'm on you.
Found his replacement, you know?
I should say, discharge the duties of councilperson.
Sounds great.
Of councilperson for the City of Grand Marais, to the best of my knowledge, judgment, and ability.
Thank you very much. You're in.
Suppose you want all this signed, too, huh?
No, no, I'll give you a pretty one to sign.
Oh, yeah, this one says mayor, so I can't sign this.
That's right.
That's it, you're in.
Yeah, you're in. Welcome to the table.
How's the chair feeling?
Yeah, it'll take you...
You make some adjustments today.
That's my chair, the one that leans way back. This one doesn't lean way back.
Whatever you want to.
Okay, so now, Tracy, you're up.
I'd like to read this.
You should read it.
Is that okay? Or do you wanna read it?
No, you should read it.
Okay, so to the City of Grand Marais, to Jay, the mayor, to Tim Kennedy, councillor, and Anton Moody, to Mike Roth, and to Kim Dunsmore. "With great regret, I resign as city councillor. Much effort is put into learning the councillor role and how the city works. Thank you, Mike and Kim, and I'm sorry to be leaving, just as I get the swing of things, 'cause you guys put a lot of effort into helping us get up, get rolling. There's so many good projects and initiatives that deserve attention and planning, and may new councillors join soon and keep the momentum going. We're so fortunate. This is an active, smart, and vibrant small community. We can make things happen. I appreciate the opportunity to work with all of you. It's been quite a learning experience, and you've been a solid group to work with. I'm excited to watch the city move forward, new city hall, new liquor store, new streetscape, and a public restroom sprawl." And P.S., I'm gonna ask Santa for a nice, clear night view of our wonderful harbor."
Awesome.
So, there you go.
Drop, mic drop.
Yeah. Let me take my envelope home, though.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thanks.
Thanks.
Oh, you're moving us right along. You can take your time. Okay. Oh.
I'm done, right?
I, no, I, I, so we need a motion to accept a resignation.
I'm moved to accept Tracy's.
Well, I'm passing out that very...
Oh, that's what this one is. Okay. Hey, you can take over the... Yes, I thought that, oh, we just had to move. Okay. So, not in any particular order. This is Resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero-three, which you may notice that this, of the four resolutions that we've had thus far this year, three of them have had to do with replacing or resigning councilpeople. You know, right? There's our percentage. So, this is the, the resolution accepting Tracy's resignation. So...
I remove Resolution two thousand eighteen oh three.
The motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Thanks, Tracy.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come back and visit.
Oh, yeah.
You can come, you can come to, come back to open forum.
I said, say, "Get that five minutes."
Get your five minutes, get your five minutes to the open forum. Like, every time you come back to town, I expect you to be there asking us how the bathrooms are coming.
I, I can tell what Tracy's platform was.
She was good.
No more nuance than that.
She was keeping us going. She was keeping us going. All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie's, thank you for your service, Tracy.
Thank you, guys.
Now you're, you're free. Are you gonna leave the popcorn or are you gonna take it?
Of course.
I'm out. My popcorn.
All right.
And so now, we have a vacancy.
One more.
We have declared a vacancy. Oh, no. Yes, we have declared a vacancy. This is two thousand eighteen dash five. This is to appoint someone to Tracy's position. This is the position that will be good through the election, and then will be up for election this November as well. So, does anyone feel strongly to make a motion to appoint to this position?
I move the appointment of Jonathan Steckelberg to fill a vacancy on council.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Hi, Steph. Take the pressure off.
Nice.
Nice work, just right into it.
I like it. All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's, you have to do an oath now, too.
Did you scratch out mayor and put in city councillor, 'cause you just handed him that paper.
I'll just point out where it says mayor. Be careful not to trip that up.
It was kind of you that would first, you find that.
"I, Jonathan Steckelberg, under penalties of law, do swear that I support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and will faithfully discharge the duties of councillor for the City of Grand Marais, to the best of my knowledge, judgment, and ability."
Thank you. Welcome, welcome, welcome. All right, you got a chair over here. You're gonna be Tracy Benson for the rest of the day.
Sounds good to me.
That's good. She's gonna get a packet there and a pen, so you... And popcorn. Don't forget the popcorn.
Dramatic.
So, welcome to you guys. I mean, like, I really appreciate you guys stepping forward to do this. Tracy really said it well in saying that there's a, there is some, there is a learning curve on this. And we, we all have attended trainings with the League of Minnesota Cities. I'd like to extend that offer to you guys as well. They do a new, newly-elected officials training...
In January.
In January, yeah, so you just missed it. But they do other trainings.
So, rerun is what you're saying, then, right?
Something you wanna do.
It's the only way. But they have other trainings throughout the, throughout the season, and if we can find something, you know, to help you guys, we certainly will, we're open to, you know, to encouraging you, setting you up to succeed in this position. And I'm always available to ask questions. Mike's always available to ask questions. These guys, most of the time.
We have much to talk about, even this very evening, so.
It's true.
After the...
So, yeah, there's things. But, but if you have any questions or anything like that, just, yeah, just, just dig in, because there's a lot of stuff to get going.
Thank you.
We appreciate your willingness and wanna support you as best we can. Yes. All right, so jumping right in. So, on our agenda, we are, actually, Mike, don't block up. Thank you. There you go. Right now, we are gonna move on to the summary of the EDA report. So, we were going to have the, the Cliff Canel from One Rivers gonna come up and give us a, a request for more funding for the Nordic Star development.
Not more, not more funding.
Well, a change in the funding, that's what it was. A change in the funding, my apologies. Oh, do you need, do you need a packet?
Yes.
Is that it? Okay. A change in the funding due to some of the scheduling of the funding that they had and some of the grants that they had received. And they figured it out, so they don't need us to change anything. So, we don't have an EDA report from them.
They, they found some additional money.
All right.
Yeah.
So, that's good news.
I support that.
Great.
So, that, that's the EDA report there, and then the remaining item that we have is the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Funding Support. And I will let Tim talk mainly to that, 'cause that is, that is kind of his wheelhouse. And then, we have, we're not, we're not too lucky to, to do appoint, committee appointments for these guys. We can give them some information and talk about that at the next meeting.
We can talk about it now.
Okay. Do you have a list of, of the committee appointments? Because if you don't...
Well, there's only a few that are crucial to talk about now.
Good point, yeah.
Well, I did notice in the minutes that I was, while I was gone, I was, you know, ceremonially awarded the appointment to the, the Y Board, which, glad to have taken, taken that responsibility for the period that I wasn't here.
Well, let's, let's go through the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails, and then after that, we'll talk. There's only, only really a couple of, of committees that, that, that meet regularly that, that we have to divvy up for you guys. And if you guys have a strong feeling either way for any of them, then you can, you can jump in and grow. So, go ahead, Tim. Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Funding Support.
Yeah, and this is, information is in the packet, but I, I received this email from the Coalition and, or Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Organization, and they're a lobbying organization trying to promote, you know, creation of trails throughout the state. And one of the things they've asked for is resolutions of support from local units of government regarding the legislative allocations for, for trails. And there's a resolution here, and it's just their, their draft resolution, so it doesn't have all the things filled in with regard to the City of Grand Marais, but...
The only one that really matters is the fifth whereas, where it says, "Insert a sentence on how a grant could help your community." Otherwise, they're all just filling the blanks with obvious.
Yeah, and I, and I think the reality here is that, you know, what, what they're supporting is the legislate, legislature recommending that, or the, the, their recommendation that two million dollars be dedicated to these programs from, from the Environment and Natural Resources Trust Fund, and also a bill, well, that tho, that those, those dollars will be set aside for local trail programs. And that's beyond the existing programs that already exist for legacy funding and also federal recreational trails programs funding that comes through federal dollars from alternative transportation. They're, they're finding that there's still gaps in the system and that communities need money that would, would go for local, local trail developments. So, I mean, I think in terms of what our, our interest might, might be is the, the Sawtooth Bluffs Project and the, the concept of trying to make some kind of a connection between community center, school, pincushion, and Sawtooth Bluffs area that might potentially be eligible for some kind of local trail, trail funding beyond the legacy or federal recreational trails programs. So, I mean, if, if we're talking about, you know, the specific language that Grand Marais would include in this resolution, it'd be regarding the ability to create connections within the community to, you know, to provide that kind of service.
Do you, do you guys understand the, like, when we say the Sawtooth Bluffs Project, do you understand what we're talking about? Can you see that?
I don't.
No.
Okay, so, so what we're, what we're, what we're talking about is the old ski hill and, and the county land that's attached to it. So, in the late nineties, there was a study that was done that, that was trying to figure out what the best use of that land would be, and there were a number of ideas. Like, one of the ideas was a, was a nature center, one of the ideas was a, a tech, a tech school, and a bunch of housing and a bunch of other ideas that, that when they actually got into that land and studied it, they found would be damn near impossible to do, because it's all wetland and there's all bedrock underneath it, and it would be really, really difficult. So, the land just sat foul for a long time, and, and then it came back up as a, as a priority with a little bit of activity on the hill. We all know what I'm talking about. And now, now we're talking about a partnership. We have an agreement with the county to pursue this, and it would be developing that six hundred acres, which has this, the old ski hill property and then the county land that surrounds it, into a regionally significant trail, or a regionally significant park that has multi-use trails and, and a number of other facilities in it. And so, that, that project, the Park Board is working on developing a master plan that includes that project and explains what the development of that project would be. F R, or this, this money that we're talking about, the, the Parks and Trails money, is potentially the money that could fund that, that project.
Not this. This is different.
This is different? I thought this was the money. I thought this was the money.
This is the connectors to access, because that's legacy-
Oh, gotcha, 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 yeah.
This is state bonding money that would be available to local communities that wouldn't qualify for legacy funding, because their project isn't regionally significant or designated as a regional facility. Or somehow, they're just not in the loop with regard to federal recreational trails program funding and/or other sources that might be available.
We've used outdoor recreation money before here. We might have used it for Harbor Park even.
I don't know.
So, that's just a grant program that the DNR does that can be used for a variety of different things.
So, what we're talking about here, then, would cover the Sawtooth Bluff's potential.
What you're saying, some of the connectors-
More like the... Can we talk about the... Like, where that's at with the steering committee on that?
Sure.
So, I mean, as an example, there's these kind of areas that have been defined by the steering committee. Are you on that?
No.
I am, but you are too, right? So, the... And so, what different user groups? So, there's like the, you know, there's a whole bunch of them, from hiking, spear hiking trail, like, the bike group, Superior Cycle Association. The Go Dog North Shore, that, you know, with for like off-leash kayaks. There's some... Apparently, there's a huge frisbee golf contingency on the west end. And there's this whole idea... And those areas in that 600-plus acres of county city land would be eligible if it's deemed an area of regional significance, right? For legacy funding through that state thing that we voted for.
Is there flat, relatively flat land in that area? Like, when you're talking frisbee golf and stuff?
Doesn't have to be flat to do that.
So-
No, but I can't imagine doing everything uphill.
So-
Either at the bottom or up on top.
So, where that big contiguous parcel is, then the question is, short of like driving up there, is there a way to be able to access that from town? And there's talk with the county, with the community center renovation. There's talk of, you know, possibly a trail on the, between the south side of the New Gunflint Trail and the, you know, the football field. There's the woods there, where the drainage ditch is. Some sort of trail going through there. And what I gather from this is that these funds could potentially, because that wouldn't necessarily qualify for the legacy funding, because it's not in the parcel that we're talking about. But it gets us access, funding access, to build trails to connect into what this larger project would be.
That, and it could also be, like, down in the rec park, they have the EDA trail backed by, you know, Sweet Art's Bluff. That would be considered a local trail, might be eligible for these kind of funds. Now, there could be competition to get those funds. But up to this point, there's been very little available to local communities for local-type trail building. And so, this is an effort on part of the Coalition to try to make that money available through state bonding.
Wasn't clear to me, Tim, about their timing requirements. Are they hoping to see this now? Or if we waited until next meeting, would that meet their requirements?
I don't know that the timing is all that critical. The legislature is in session, obviously, so things are happening right now. So, they have that... I mean, the Parks and Trails Organization is having, I think, their legislative day on March 21st. And it'd be nice if they would have it before that so that they could show that the city of Grand Marais is supporting their efforts.
So, our next meeting is scheduled for the 14th?
Right. So, we could wait to do it until then, and they would still have it before their legislative day.
Then you two would have an opportunity to read it, so you know what the resolution is talking about and ask any questions about it.
Do I have this homework in this job?
Depends. So, yeah, so we're talking about general obligation bonds to go into the fund for this, for this part of the project.
Right, this would be just one part of the state's bigger bonding bill, so.
So, the possibility... Having all of these letters of support doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to happen. It's just more feathers in the cap of this one and the bonding bill.
More encouragement, of course, when-
To get involved, or to get it included.
We have an opportunity to talk to our legislators. We let them know that, you know, we've passed this request for support. Hopefully, that they would then support that initiative.
But maybe it would be... I mean, we'll ask you guys. Do you guys feel like you'd like some more time to learn a little bit more about this? Or do you have any questions right now?
If two weeks isn't a big deal-
It isn't, I don't think it is.
I wouldn't mind learning a bit. To me, it seems like we're just asking the legislator to please put this money towards it or bond it over, which is not horrible, but I would like to have a little bit more information.
Context, yeah.
Understand.
Gathering, I mean, based on... Yeah, I mean, it's not even necessarily saying, like, we want you to spend that money here.
Right.
We just are supporting the idea that you're using-
That money for that purpose.
Right.
Any, you know, any-
Any community may use.
Yeah.
Well, that's cool, we can table it.
Yeah, I mean, you could go to the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails website, and, you know, they have considerable amount of information with regard to what they do and what their request is, so.
Is the Parks and Trails, the steering... Not Parks and Trails, but the Sawtooth Bluff Steering Committee information available for review yet? I thought there was some-
There is a public meeting, I think, scheduled for sometime in March.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's definitely reviewable. I'm not sure how accessible it is right now, but we can get it to people.
I mean, if that would help too, you could just look at that and see where it could, not that it wouldn't be, but where it could possibly be used here, just to kind of wrap your head around it.
It'd be good to get you guys up to speed on that project. You know, the conversations about that project too. Dave Teasdale might be a good guy to talk to about that, because he's been digging on it for a while. Or whomever we appoint to the Park Board. We'd probably get an earful about that. That's a good segue, right?
So, that Sawtooth Bluff's project is a city project then, if something were to be developed and done?
It's a joint county.
City, county.
Right now, there's a joint planning process going on, and that determination hasn't been made yet as to whether it will be a city facility, a county facility, or a joint facility of some sort. So, I think those questions are still out there.
And figuring out funding.
Very, very early in the process on that one.
True.
But, yeah, but, yeah.
People are going to ask questions, I'm going to want to have some more information.
That's good, information is good. And we can find you as much information as you need.
Yeah, and the steering committee has really been doing the work with ARDC to try to gather information from various user groups. This is on Sawtooth Bluff. And with that information, they're trying to put that together in a planned format that would satisfy legacy requirements for a master plan in order to become eligible for Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Legacy Dollars. So, you know, it's a lot of steps and a lot of pieces to the puzzle have to get put in place, so.
But there is a push on that because of the... When we're hoping to be able to get-
Well, the funding cycle, I think the funding applications have to be in by, I think, the end of August or first part of September or so, or, you know, that timeline, so. And before that, the plan would have to be submitted and accepted and scored and be eligible for funding, yes.
I don't remember what day that meeting is in March, but it's the same time that the county's Parks and Trails Committee is... Or Commission is meeting, I thought.
I thought it was like the 26th, maybe. They talked about making it like a special thing.
Yeah, maybe it is a different day. But that's the group that's going to host a-
Be the first meeting.
Meeting and talk about where we're at on that.
Cool. Cool, so we'll revisit this at the next meeting. Yep, and in the meantime, you guys-
Thank you.
That's good, we're going to get you up to speed fast. All right, so the next thing on the agenda is the Council and Staff Report. So, this is... So, before we get there, though, I think that we should go through a couple of appointments on committees. Now, the committees that I have in my head are the Y Board, the Park Board, and the Personnel Committee. Are there any others that you would think are important?
What about the ARDC?
There's a couple others, let's just take care of them next time.
Yeah, because they'd be-
The Y Board, because we want to stick to... Well, maybe you do, I don't know.
I'm here now to object, though.
The Cardboard's actually going to meet before your next meeting, so.
Yeah, so we need to have somebody on that. So, of those three, so, a little bit of a breakdown. The Y Board meets once a month. This is the Y Advisory Board. They do a lot of talking about the policies at the Y, the operations of the Y, have some limited fiduciary powers for how the Y is put together and run. And also, you know, just has an ear to the ground on what's happening up there and can make suggestions about things to improve it. So, that's the Y Board. The Park Board meets once a month? Yes, once a month as well. And they have... They discuss, obviously, the rec park and all the other parklands that we have in the city. So that, you know, even the green space in front of the library is considered a park space, right? Well, they kind of take care of it.
We encourage them to take-
It's a lot of stuff that's-
So, things that happen with the rec park, things that happen with projects like the Sawtooth Bluff Project or any other public park space that we have, like Harbor Park, Bear Tree Park, Boulder Park, are all wrapped into that. Personnel Committee is... Meets irregularly. We meet as needed. I'm the other representative on the Personnel Committee. There are only two counselors that serve on that. And they, you know, work with personnel issues or personnel situations that we might have. So, they're not all bad. A lot of it is just how do we deal with the staff that we have? How do we expand if we need to expand staff? How do we move things around? How do we do succession planning, things like that?
Mostly, the two biggest issues they might be involved with are negotiations with our union and hiring of department head-level staff. They really won't be involved in other kind of day-to-day personnel issues at all.
And we have just kind of done some restructuring with retirement and leaving of a couple of our employees. Those positions have kind of transformed into something else, and so we just created a new position. Now, the Personnel Committee helped work on the job description for that. And I think that there'll be some more of that coming down the line when-
We have some assessments on job descriptions and other such things like that that are due. So, there will be a little bit of work for that department or for that committee to do as well. So, I wonder if you guys are chomping at the bit for one or the other, but-
I would be interested in the Park Board.
All right, is that cool with you? You interested in either the Y Board or the Personnel Committee?
Actually, the Personnel really interests me a lot.
Okay, cool. I think that's a good fit.
And you can stay on the Y Board.
Yeah! Does anybody want to take the Y Board? I went to one meeting, it was actually, it was a pretty good group of people. They told me I couldn't-
I've never even been in there, so I don't know much about it.
That might actually be a good thing, though. Because then you can look at it with fresh eyes, so.
I was a FIAD major, but...
Well, and so that one, I don't know when the next meeting for that is. I should know, I still get emails. But, you know, I think they just had their meeting. I think they have it at the beginning of the month. Well, then, it should be coming up pretty soon. There are a couple of other appointments as well. If you'd be willing to be on the Y Board, then, you know, then that would fill in another one of the spaces for committees that you have to serve on. And then, when there's other ones, then you can be like, "I'm on the Y Board, I don't want to do that other stuff." Are you willing to do that? I don't want to pressure you into it, but if you're willing to do that, think about it. Yeah, I... That's... Yeah. I'm not going to pressure you into it, but do it.
Listen here, Jay.
I'm just kidding. Barely kidding.
Did you sign that about her being appointed yet?
Sorry, I signed. I signed the stuff right after people say-
You can say no then.
Well, he could also-
You have no power over you.
I am the... I am-
Threatening to not let me on really isn't a threat either, is it?
That's a good point.
I will attempt it.
Think about it.
How's that?
Okay, that sounds good. And we can always move these things around, too.
As I was saying, could come back in a month and go, "Hey!" Or maybe in a month, they'd go, "Get her out of here."
No, that's... You should stay.
Well, then, you definitely have to stay.
Then you have to stay, yeah.
Please, for our sake.
Yeah. But the Y Board really, I think, really has to be one of you guys. I mean, it could be one of these guys too, but they're already pretty loaded down with appointments. And I can't be on it because I work there, because I teach a spin class on Tuesday nights. And they have a rule that you can't, if you work there, you can't be on it.
All right, Jay, I will do it for you.
Okay, sweet.
There you go.
Get a motion.
All right. Yeah, we should get a motion on these appointments. So, there are three appointments. We have Keller to the Personnel and Y Board, and we've got Jonathan for the Park Board. Is there a motion?
I'd move that, make those appointments.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Motion and a second. You guys could move a second in as well. Any discussion? We'll talk about the rest of them later, so. Anything else?
And who notifies us of the dates? Mike, Jim?
We'll get whoever the staff person is to... We'll let them know who they're new.
And they will contact us?
Yeah. Okay, any else?
I...
All in favor? Opposed? Carries? All right, great. So, that's the majority of the business that we have. We go through council reports, where we share what we've been doing for the past couple of weeks. Since you guys just got appointed, we'll start with that. So, did you have any meetings, anything else?
Yeah, we had a Sawtooth Bluff meeting, but it was, there was snow, so it was kind of short and via computer. But it sounds like that is... Well, that's where we set the date for kind of doing the listening, or what would you call it? Not open house, but kind of like an open house, right? To kind of share what the steering committee and the ARDC has put together.
Yeah, since the county's doing it, they'll probably want to call it a public hearing.
Public hearing. There you go.
Makes me cringe a little bit.
Public input sessions.
Well, I hope, but maybe not. It depends, you know? It's maybe just more about an informational meeting than anything else.
So, yeah, that process is, you know, is strange after meeting around to like then try and do it over computers and technical issues and all that stuff, so. Not a lot, I can have, I got an EDA meeting next Tuesday, so next meeting I'll have more.
Okay. Tim?
Tim?
I've been gone for two weeks, and I really appreciated that short-term appointment to the Y Board, but-
We're all about filling stuff up, that's the only thing. So, you literally don't have anything because you were gone.
I was gone, yeah, don't have anything.
Okay, well, then I-
So, it's usually the bar where Mike then, or they would come back and start to say, "Well, I forgot."
I forgot, I forgot, yeah.
We can start to build new habits, so.
I was going to say, I'm pretty on point saying what I got to say, and then I'm done.
Okay, so, I just want to make sure I don't forget anything here. So, a couple days ago, I actually missed this meeting, because I was at another meeting. But Shane Steele, our Green Steps Coordinator and our Climate Action Plan Coordinator guy, met with the CCLP and our nature group folks and Mike to... Were you there?
That was actually yesterday.
That was yesterday?
Yeah.
Yeah. What did I say?
Couple days ago.
Okay, yesterday.
I'm having trouble this week, too.
Yeah, well, it's been a couple of long days. So, yesterday, they met, and they're continuing to assemble what information we currently have put together for the Climate Action Plan and to realize what we have missing in that. And that's pretty much where they're at right now.
There was two questions that they did talk about. One, should the county want to be involved in this effort? And so, there's been a few ongoing conversations about that with the county. And it looks like there's going to be a path forward that the county would be willing to be involved with, and it looks like there's going to be a path forward that the county would be willing to be involved with, take advantage of the resources that we've got to work on this plan? And then the other thing is, well, what's our next steps here? And they're related, so the next step is, we've actually passed an energy plan five years ago with the county and city jointly, and it's been a while, I think, since the city councilors and certainly the county board members have had a chance to look at it. And so that's what Shane's focusing on, is preparing a presentation. He'll come with Stacy from CCLP, and they'll talk about what the energy plan says, what efforts have already happened, and then how that might transform into our climate action plan.
Cool. Very good. Obviously, yesterday we had the open house for the Highway sixty-one project. The final estimation for numbers was around ninety, we had about seventy, seventy people sign in. And, and they saw quite a few people just kind of skirt the sign-in table and come in and look at stuff, so. One of the comments that one of the guys from MINDOT said was that they, um, they had two public meetings in Duluth to discuss some renovations on West Duluth, and that's Spaghetti Interchange sort of area, and they had thirty less people show up. So they said that that was actually a really productive, uh, public meeting for them. In the conversations that I've had, uh, online and in emails and things like that since the meeting, there has been a bit of a, a bit of a call for, for another one, like for another, another open house type meeting for people who are at work or who were unable to make it. And that's something that this next, this upcoming week, we're going to get together, the steering committee's gonna get together again, and we're going to kind of debrief the meeting that we had and figure out, you know, when that would be appropriate, if that would be appropriate, like what kind of information we can get to people and how we can best do that. Generally, the conversations that I had at the, at the open house were, were, were pretty positive. People had a lot of questions about how things functioned and what the reasoning behind everything was, but when the, the reasons were put out there and the, you know, all of the thinking behind this, the, the proposal itself were put out there, most people, you know, left nodding their heads and, and saying, okay, I can see that, I can see how this is gonna work. There was significant concern about the trees, about the Big Elm trees, uh, between third and first, and we actually got the, the, uh, tree assessment that was done by the, by the MINDOT arborist. That shows their, um, his assessment of those trees. And I just heard from Diane Booth today that in the middle of March, there's going to be a University of Minnesota Horticulturist up here in the community doing some projects with Park Board, and that he would be also available and willing to do an assessment on those trees. And so I think that that's a good idea for us to, you know, some people were calling for a second, uh, for a second assessment on those trees, and I do think that it's important to, um, to follow through with that. Although I, I, I'm almost a hundred percent positive that, that the assessment will come back very similar to what, to what this one came back as, which was saying, stating that, that all of the trees on the south side of the road are in pretty bad shape, and that are starting to have decay issues and, um, and would most likely not survive the disturbances that would happen with the construction. So, so that's, that's all that development, um, there's been a lot of conversation about that one. So, that will obviously continue, and I think it's good that it does. Library Board meeting was canceled because Amanda had her baby, I don't know if you guys heard that? Amanda had her baby, and Steve had been planning this vacation for like a year and a half. And he was planning on getting his vacation out before Amanda had her baby, and the baby came early. So, nobody was there to run the meeting, so we canceled it. 'Cause we weren't gonna tell Steve he couldn't go on his vacation.
No, we told him he had to go, actually.
Yeah, it's a good idea. There are some emergency management, uh, activities coming up. The Emergency Management Conference is gonna be in March, um, and then in April, there's going to be the Cross Border Emergency, uh, Management Gathering that happens up in Grand Portage. That one's actually gonna be pretty cool, because there's a bunch of big shots coming from both the US and Canada to celebrate this new agreement that we're, that we're in the final stages of, of finalizing that will allow cross-border assistance, which is really cool, because we've not had that in the past. So like if American services were gonna go up, they could go to the border, but they couldn't issue services across the border. And now we've gotten that straightened out, so that we're cool with it. Like Minnesota and Ontario get along, which is good. And there's some other developments on that, that I'm sure will come up, um, when I actually go to those things and have more, more updates for you. There was a meeting, uh, to, to show the, the results of the, uh, Art Space, assessment that happened for this, for the city as well, a little bit of background on that. There's a, a group of people, a group of artists and local community members that have been calling themselves the Creative Economy Coalition, and those folks, uh, have been working on ways that we can improve the economy for creative, um, creative makers. You know, this crosses all, all borders, all different kinds of art, music, all that sort of stuff. And they invited Art Space, which is a, a national, um, like art development, like art live-work development company that's based in the Twin Cities, invited them to come up and do an assessment of Grand Ray and come see if they could come up with any ideas for any projects that, that could happen up here, that could provide live-work space for, um, for, for creative people that, you know, was relatively affordable, was affordable, you know? 'Cause that's the whole point. And they came up, and they came up with a bunch of spaces, uh, they, the report said that, and I have this report if you guys wanna see it. The report said that they pretty much have to be, the spaces pretty much have to be in the city, because it's the only place we can get utilities to them effectively and, and cost effectively, because digging a well and putting in septic for, for a larger facility is, is exceptionally expensive. And plus, land acquisition is also very expensive. So the different places that they, that they identified were this, this spot, City Hall, like the City Hall area, 'cause we were talking about moving to City Hall. The, the Coast Guard Station, which is in conversation about being reverted back to city control, because the Coast Guard wants to go someplace else. I mean, still be here, but they wanna have like a house, they don't wanna have to manage that whole property, because it's too much for the three guys that are there, um, also in the line. And then, gosh, do you remember where the other spots were?
Yeah, there was a spots.
There was five spots, then they all had varying, like, they all had pros and cons. I think one of them was the, one of the properties on the edge of the business park, I think one was the Tom Taboda, the front side of the Tom Taboda site, which is, you know, the city owns that, and we don't know what we're gonna do with it. Probably, we could sell it back, redevelop it, we could put City Hall there, we could do all kinds of things. And basically, what they were looking for is, um, is what are the places where we could, we could develop something that would have housing, uh, artistic creation space, and some gallery space? And those were the, those were the spots that they came up with. So the next, the next stop, step is to figure out, like, what would, what would a facility like that look like and how much would it cost? And, and those, those things, uh, that's up to the Creative Economy Group to see if they want to go ahead and do that. They don't have, uh, you know, they raise all their own monies, do, do all this stuff, um, they're doing all this stuff to help, you know, put some clarity into this process, so, so it's a really interesting thing, so. If you wanna see that report, I've got it, it's kind of interesting. I mean, there's not a lot of things that are really super surprising in it, but, but that's it.
What is it they would be asking for us from the city then?
Potentially, potentially land, but maybe nothing. It's, it's, it's really kind of unknown. Art Space has a really good reputation of, um, for being able to fundraise really effectively for their projects. So, like, for instance, they have a, one of their projects, or the smaller projects is in Fergus Falls. It's an old hotel that they bought and then renovated into artist loft space and then a gallery and multi-use space on the first floor. And that kind of a thing, I think, is really cool, because we need to have that, we need that multi-use space. Like, we don't have that multi-use space in this town. We've got some places, but, but those, those spaces are always so busy, it's hard to schedule something in them. Not to say that this space wouldn't, but it would spread the load a little bit out. And there's no, you know, they have no commitment, the, the Creative Economy Group has no equipment, no commitment to pursuing any project at all. They're basically doing this just to get information, 'cause they wanna see what could be done. And I think that that's, I think that's, that's pretty honorable. Got noisy trucks tonight.
I wonder who that one is.
Yeah. Did you know who the previous one was?
Well, we had a guess.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I knew who the previous one was.
Okay, fair enough. The Downtown Business Coalition got together as well, started talking about summer plans. That group is working really well together and is, and is starting to, you know, put their energies towards the same, towards the same kind of productive ends, and I really like seeing that. I think we'll be, we'll be seeing a lot more positive stuff coming out of that, out of that group in the next year as well. And then the last thing is just kind of a fun thing. I was asked to, by the Violence Prevention Center, to take part in what they call the Safe Dates Program, which is a program with the ninth graders up at the school, where, um, we go through a program to teach them about what like healthy relationships in high school look like and what unhealthy relationships in high school look like, and considering that, like, I barely dated in high school, I think that, that's gonna be hilarious. And really cool. So, so I think, I think that's gonna be really fun. I probably won't have any other updates about that, but I just wanted to mention that, 'cause that was kinda funny.
It's the same, I hope they school you first, 'cause you never know when the ninth grader hits.
Right, exactly, Snapchat, right? So that's all I have. Do you guys have anything, any closing comments or anything, snide more? Great, well, in that case, we are adjourned. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you to you guys.
Hey, Chris.